Tonight, I've asked Councilman Segma if he'll offer our invocation and Councilman Nice and if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this evening, especially grateful for the opportunities we have to be here. Grateful for the freedoms we enjoy and the ability to participate and be involved in our own self-governance and in our community matters. We ask that all of us this meeting, all of us as we consider the city's business and the viewpoint to the citizens, that we might be able to understand the issues well and perceive those areas that may be of concern or may be of benefit to this community and these citizens. We thank you for this opportunity to represent the neighbors whom we enjoy and love. We thank you for the good people whom we live and the beautiful weather and great community that we are a part of. And we ask that all of us watch over this meeting, say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Need to excuse our Councilman Turek who's out of town and our City Manager also out of town. Move on to item one, approval of the agenda. Entertaining motion to approve the agenda?
Motion that we approve the agenda as listed.
Second.
Thank you.
Nice and I.
Truman I.
Staley I.
Segmiller I.
All right, our agenda is approved for this evening. Item two, announcements. Any announcements to come from this body? Move on to item three, Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Need to declare this time, gentlemen. Okay. Item four, approval on our consent agenda to approve the minutes from the City Council Meeting of eight, twelve, fifteen. Any questions or comments on those meetings?
Now I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the City Council Meetings of August twelve, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you. Have a second. Have a motion and a second.
Nice and I.
Truman I.
Staley I.
Segmiller I.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item five, Public Hearings and Related Ordinances. A public hearing for consideration to approve a zone change request, Z dash fifteen dash eleven, to change zone from RA dash two, residential agricultural minimum two-acre lots to RA dash one, residential agricultural minimum one-acre lots located approximately twenty-seven hundred east Washington Dam Road, applicant Leon and orderly Smith. How are you, Smiths? Haven't seen you for a while.
Yes, state the applicant's request and the changes on zero acres. It's located approximately at twenty-seven hundred east Washington Dam Road. Requested change is from the current residential agricultural two-acre minimum to the proposed residential agricultural one-acre zoning designation. The general plan land use designation at this area is established as the estate. And the surrounding zoning to this parcel is residential agricultural one acre to the west, residential agricultural two acre to the north and east, and the open space to the south. Requested zone change conforms to the general plan zoning ordinance and is reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission at their August fifth meeting. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of Z dash fifteen dash eleven for the zone change from agricultural two acre to the agricultural one acre to the City Council just based on the findings that you see in your report. Bring that particular map up for you to see, and I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have on this proposed change.
I don't have any questions.
Anybody? Okay.
Yes, this is a public hearing, Mayor, and if I may, I'm going to excuse myself for just two minutes, run up to my office and grab a few things
Sure.
or something, but I'll give you time for your, hopefully, your public hearing. I'll be right back as soon as I can.
This is a public hearing, open for public comment. Anybody have an interest in this proposal? You're welcome to come on up. Sounds like I have to stall for two minutes.
Can we close it and do the consideration to approve the ordinance?
Sure. Absolutely. No, nobody want to come up on this one? Okay. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So may.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Nice and I.
Truman I.
Staley I.
Segmiller I.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to item B, consideration to approve an ordinance approving zone change, Z dash fifteen dash eleven, to change the present zone from RA dash two to RA dash one.
Mayor, a motion that we approve a zone change, Z dash fifteen dash eleven, to change the present zone from RA two to RA one.
Have a motion and a second.
Nice and I.
Truman I.
Staley I.
Segmiller I.
All right, that's approved. Do I anything to that, Drew, on that?
No, it's just the people that own it. Guess I've felt and neglect to say that they just want to split it in half. Purpose behind that, and so with three acres, they had to go down to the R one A to do that, so pretty simple.
Thank you. All right, move on to item six, preliminary plots. Item A, consideration to approve a preliminary plot for the Warner Gateway located east of Marlberry at approximately forty-six hundred south African Carvin Church.
Yes, state the applicant's request and approval of the preliminary plot for the Warner Gateway subdivision. This lies due east of the Meadows. That's part of the Stukey Farms PCD, but yet this is not within the PCD boundaries. It sits in this corner that was left over. They are requesting a subdivision that would develop one hundred and sixty-two lots in the area of coverage is thirty-four point eight-four acres. The zoning at this particular location is the single-family residential six thousand square foot minimum. The proposed subdivision conforms to the subdivision requirements and the other city ordinances that relates to this particular location. Now, the one problem area of concern to the request is the fact that there is only one existing ingress and egress roadway that is known as Marlberry Way. And you can kind of see that, I'll kind of zoom in. It comes off of Washington Fields Road, and there is roughly ten lots, five on each side of the road of that that short road into this proposed development. With that said, staff is therefore putting requirement, it's one of the conditions, that there would only be allowed thirty lots to be applied for for final plat status until the time that other ingress and egress points will be established as growth occurs to the south and to the north. The developer's aware of that and has accepted that 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 limit at this point until future accesses are made available. Staff reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. During the Planning Commission review of this request on their August fifth meeting, and after lengthy public input, decided by a split vote of three to two to recommend denial. The stated reasons for the denial recommendation by Mr. Don, Commissioner Don Williams, made the motion was the design or the layout of the lots and the streets of the plat itself was not to his liking. That there is no park or recreation area, that the traffic pattern was insufficient, and that the drainage basin represented on the plat is not large enough. So with that, the Planning Commission by that vote of three to two recommended denial of the preliminary plat of the Warner Gateway subdivision to the City Council. And of course, anytime there is a denial, I make the motioner or ask them, I don't make them, I guess I just spoke that, that they give give the reason, and again, and it was based on configuration of plat design, lack of park and recreation, traffic patterns, and a larger drainage basin was the motion that Mr. Williams put forward. Staff recommend still for approval from to both the Planning Commission and the City Council based on the findings subject to the conditions that you see in your report. I also made note and gave you some commentary in your report as related to the motion, just for your information as council in in your decision on that. I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that the City Councilman might have on this application.
Drew, I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant. I think you raised your hand when they said you. I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant to get a little bit of background on the project and and hear from him what he's proposing and maybe ask him a few questions if that's okay?
That'd be fine.
Mayor, council members, thanks for your time tonight. Would you like me to briefly describe the project first?
Yeah, give us some background, tell us about the project, tell us what you envision down there. Just give us a, give us an idea of what of what you have in mind here with these almost thirty-five acres.
Great, so almost thirty-five acres, as you mentioned. To the right of your screen there, that is the Southern Parkway. So that is where UDOT is proceeding forward with the expressway. And so much of this subdivision will butt up to it, much of the subdivision will be subject to the noise therefrom. So one comment that was made, and and I have a great deal of respect for the residents nearby, especially the developer and the great job they've done at Stukey Farms. However, you're butting a major expressway. And somebody said these lots should be much larger and that's not realistic when you're building against an expressway to be able to sell those. The PCD right next door, Stukey Farms, has lots as small as seven thousand feet. So if it were to, if it weren't a PCD and it were to be zoned, it would also be an R one six and similar. Of course, as you go further from the expressway, you would expect lot sizes to get bigger. So what we've planned here, I will tell you that since the last meeting, we went out, we paid for a traffic study because of the comments that were made and because of what the Planning Commissioner said. We will present that tonight. Lester's, I believe, going to present that to you, the results of that traffic study. It's miniscule. It's, I don't want to say irrelevant, because everything's relevant, but it is a miniscule amount of traffic. Been working with the city planners to follow the guidelines and to provide exactly what they laid out for us, and it meant a lot of back and forth to get it to the point where they would send it to you for their approval. So we did all that, and then we get hit with traffics, with the traffic scenario, which there are limitations upon us until we get that second egress condition met, before we can go beyond thirty lots, that onus is upon us. Drainage was another big thing they brought up, and the council member mentioned that I don't think you've taken care of that adequately. Well, that's a condition that we have to meet with our engineers, and if, as we proceed forward, that condition isn't met, well, then things will change. However, when we created, when we did the initial drainage study for this subdivision, it was prior to the expressway being built. That detention basin is significant. It's very sufficient to meet the needs because the expressway creates a dam for the historical flow of water down that hillside. It will easily meet it. Somebody said, well, we don't want those residents using our park and using our paths and all those things. A very understandable circumstance. Stukey Farms has done a wonderful job and built in some very nice amenities and features for its residents. For somebody to come in next to them and benefit from that, well, I'd have a problem with that, too. That's a fair argument for them to make. Development will go forward, and Stukey Farms will eventually be surrounded by homes. This property right here is in very close proximity to the new high school being built, to be built. That area is going to be under very, as you, as I'm sure you've seen, it's going to be under very heavy development over the next few years. So that drainage basin that we've put in, I have to say that the park at Stukey Farms is also a drainage basin. The developer has just done a wonderful job of putting amenities inside the drainage basin, and we can do the same thing in our drainage basin to try to mitigate our residents going onto their property, which they shouldn't. It's private property and they shouldn't use it, but nature of the beast is what it is. The general plan shows for a city park just north of this. There was much to do in our last meeting about why aren't we providing an amenity for our residents? And why haven't we considered this? Not a condition for putting in a subdivision. The developer has done adjacent to us is superb. They've done a very nice job and created a nice community. Nonetheless, as somebody comes to the north, they're going to build a typical subdivision and do the same thing at some point. That will change.
The park you know to the north is the BLM, correct?
To the north is the BLM, and then just to the north of Stukey Farms is all private land. It's owned by a developer. Plans to do part commercial and part residential on that land. But that's kind of the thought process and the plan. We've worked through it, we've tried to be very careful and and considerate, but development is not always the popular thing.
So that's, okay. I remember when this came for a zone change about a year, I think it was August twenty, almost, is it?
Almost a year ago, correct.
Almost a year ago to the day. And the zone change request was for R one six. And in that land use designation, appropriate zoning, there are R one A, R two, and R one six. History with this council, we've been very hesitant to give high, high-density zoning. Whatever reason, the questions that we asked and the answers we got back, we didn't vet this, maybe as much as we should have. But in part of that, we, at least I lean a little bit, I help you a little bit, I mean a lot in the Planning Commission, in the minutes from the Plan Commission meetings. Can you just talk a little bit, I'm interested to read a couple of things that were brought from the Plan Commission.
Please.
Have you kind of discussed those? Commissioner Shepherd asked how many homes would potentially be in a once, once you've brought a plat to us, which we're here tonight, used at various sizes that you're not sure yet. Do you, so do you know the average size of the lots that you're proposing here tonight?
I do not know the average size. They range in size from
I tried to zoom in with my iPad and try to see it, and I'm just trying to get an idea of what the average lot size is.
They range in size from approximately in the six thousand range up until there are some as large as eight, nine thousand? Eleven, some as large as eleven, so they, there you go, there's eleven.
Is there a way to tell to how many of those lots are in the six thousand range? It looks like the majority are in the six thousand range.
Oh, there's a lot, if you look right there in the seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, you've got to work around your drainage, but a lot with strada is particularly.
As I look at thirteen, fourteen, those are all in the seven thousands. Several of those are sixty-three, and there's a seven at the top.
Yeah, you're in the top left. Go east, go east and south.
Okay, so seven thousand, seven thousand, seventy-seven hundred. There's sixty-six, sixty-five, sixty-three, sixty-three, sixty-six, seventy-two, seventy-two, sixty-four, seventy-two, eighty-three, sixty-two, seven thousand. Sixes.
That's, that's kind of what I noticed in, you know, in preparation. Next question that Commissioner Shepherd asked was what with the lot size, what would the largest, what the largest size would be? Mr. Trump said about eight thousand, ten thousand square foot lots. Other questions may ask. Another question, so we see a few eight thousand, a few of the hundred and sixty-two hundred lots are in that range.
I would just be taking a guess.
Handful?
Handful. Yeah. Yeah, in the eight to ten thousand square foot range, a small handful. I'll recognize, you know, I acknowledge that.
All right. The other question was, would the, yes, it would be in harmony with with the, with the lot size in Stukey Farms? How would you, you indicated that would be, do you still feel that that's in harmony with the lot size in Stukey Farms? And I understand that this is a little bit higher density, that you feel like it's in harmony with that. These are just some of the things that we discussed.
Yeah.
We discussed mostly with the Plan Commission better than this more than the council did. I'm just wondering if if what you're bringing to us is what the Plan Commission, kind of what you presented when you asked for the, for the zone designation.
Is it in harmony? That's a very subjective question. In my opinion, that's a tough question to answer, Mr. Staley. Stukey Farms doesn't sit next to the expressway. And so if you're going back specifically to the minute. Yes, but if you don't mind me saying, as you go further south with Stukey Farms, those little boxes that you see at the bottom, those are significantly higher density structures than the proposed subdivision. So if you just want to go on density and be in, be in harmony, then my answer is most definitely yes. I'm greater density than their newest project, much greater density. Now, as you continue further south and you get closer to the expressway, it's RV parking.
Definitely with with the PCD.
Yeah. And so
So I'm just asking your opinion.
Yes.
Asking from your standpoint.
Most definitely consistent.
And then you also mentioned that with the, on the eastern border is the Southern Corridor. And that you would expect smaller sized lots to be on that side as opposed on the western side where it was the Meadows and believe is that part of Stukey Farms.
Correct.
Did you accomplish that with this plat?
Yes. If you look at the, the homes that are being built, I'm reiterating myself, and I don't want to reiterate myself to the council, and I want to have all due respect for you sitting here. Those homes have a density, if you look at my density ratio versus the homes that are currently being built in the new portion of Stukey Farms, the density ratio, can you help me with that?
Randy Walker, Bush and Gudsel, I see where the confusion's coming in. What Corbin's referring to is the phase five of the Meadows, which is the new innovative project that Carl's bringing forward, the cottages, which is the small clustering homes. That is the density that's proposed, or excuse me, approved in
In this particular portion, in the PCD.
Immediately adjacent to the bottom, yeah. So if you actually count the lots that Warner Gateway is proposing to butt to on the Meadows, there's five single-family lots that border on our, our western border, their eastern border.
It looks, and again, I'm
I mean, the park takes up a big portion of what we're backing up to. And unfortunately, the lots on those cul-de-sacs are fabulous lots because they span out in the backs, going around the circle.
I guess just from, from your explanation with the corridor, with the smaller lots on the east, with larger lots on the west, I've just not seen the variation as it goes from, from east to west. Am I missing something there?
No, I understand, that's fair to say. I understand your question. In being in harmony, I'm sorry, comparison from east to west, no, they're approximately the same size.
I can go longer, let some of the council members have questions.
Don't like you're covering a lot of bases.
Then I will for a minute. Talk to us about the access. When you sat down with Randy at Bush and Gudsel, how did you determine the access points to the, I see the two outlets in the north and the two to the south?
Yes.
How did you determine where those were going to be?
Simply put them together. Sure. My, my engineers put those together.
I can address it for you. Well, if you guys all know the history, the Fields Road was realigned. The old Fields Road, in fact, we've got an old photo in front of us. You can see that actually went through Corbin's property entirely. It wasn't down on Stukey Farms, it's up in his. So when the city went in and realigned the road, in essence, they cut off access to Corbin's piece of property. Marlberry Way now kind of, kind of more or less acts like the old Fields Road alignment by providing the access. But now on the eastern side, we have the state who came in and built the Southern Corridor. So now he's cut off access there. So before, like, if this project would have come in five years ago, he would have had multiple points of access since the Fields Road went through his property. So now in determining where these access points were, and we're super flexible in our south access points going to Stukey Farms, we realize that Carl's in planning mode, and we want to totally accommodate wherever he
You have some conversations with him?
Yes. So I don't think he likes where the two are currently located, because I don't know if it fits with his plan. But Corbin's more than happy to move them wherever, because it doesn't really affect us where those two points come out in the end. On the top, the reason where they're at is we tried to hug it the farthest we could to the west to have least impact on the BLM. And then the other one kind of just picks the middle, so it's not really tying the BLM into any, you know, when that goes to develop into any weird quirky, it's the hardest thing ever when I get a piece of property and there's two stub roads like a hundred feet apart, you know? So we're trying to space it to where it makes the most sense for future development of that BLM piece. And it's the quickest access to, Corbin's been working with the property owners. Can you see it? The red is showing, is that okay? Are you okay with that?
Yes.
And the, the red is showing the proposed accesses that he's working with, the private land owner that owns property that adjacent, or that abuts to the Fields Road, just north of the Meadows. And then there's a portion that comes up and through the BLM. The private ownership line is right here. West of that would be Newman Investments. And Corbin can speak on that, what contact he's had with them and what ground leeway he's made there.
So regarding egress, we have already come to an arrangement with Newman Investments that parcel just to the north of us is BLM land, and we're working with the BLM in Salt Lake City and have put forth our proposal to them. That is a process that will take six to twelve months, maybe longer. That's something that we don't have control over, but that's critical to us to be able to continue development beyond our thirty lots.
Drew, if I may, ask a question here. One of the conditions that staff has listed, I'll just read it here for the record. Condition number eleven, only thirty lots will be able to apply for final plat status and be recorded until the time that alternative ingress slash egress roads are made available through development. Are you, are you requiring one additional road? Are you requiring more than one additional road? What's the, what's the meaning of this condition? Excuse me?
The meaning is, I think we'll look at that like we have with, I'm going to give Bella Vista as a great example up on top of the hill, that we let them go to a certain point before a second one is, and then we'll just follow whatever the standards are. If a third one is required, then we'll have to hold and limit until that is met as well. So that's why I just put that in, and with the proposal of of these ones to the north and south, I will make note that Stukey Farms Council was here at our Planning Commission meeting. I just wanted, and if you read the minutes, Mr. Ants stated that Stukey is only responsible for putting one, one stub road from the south up. Now, they can hold to that, they're only required to put one up. But I know that they're going to have to be flexible upon that southern boundary line with with Stukey Farms. So possibly that only one of those will end up being an access point. Because they are, they are required to put one up.
Okay, so the standards, as you, as you understand them, will there need to be three accesses in grace? Or will this be, will two suffice for all of these proposed lots?
The thirty, where that thirty number comes from, isn't related to a traffic study or anything like that. The thirty
The 30 comes from fire. It's a fire and life safety. Yeah, so when our traffic study was done, it's basically, we're so close to proximity of the Fields Road and stuff, it more or less, one access, more than that, the Marlberry, which is existing, cannot say that road name. And then one to the north or one to the south, more than is plenty to meet the traffic impact, but it's just fire and life. So just for clarification.
If you say at Marlberry, it's a little easier.
Makes it easier. Remember the Marlberry, man. But to add on to answer that question, yeah, two of them is what our city code requires. You know, we don't put a limit on it. We always go back to whatever the fire standards are and distances and will make recommendation as those come. Since they're proposing, and proposing five, but legitimately they're, more than likely end up being four if Stukey Farms holds to their minimum requirement. Um, southern, there would be four accesses. They are proposing. Personally and professionally, I would like to see three at build out. We'll have that. Because more than likely, this is the one that's going to come for Farm 11. And then they'll have one in from Stukey Farms in, so we will have three at total build out.
At what point do you cross from two access to three access points?
Well, that would probably be by the Fire Marshal's interpretation, what he would like to see there. Technically by code, we don't say you have to have three at, at this point. We would kind of probably take in a traffic engineer's professional opinion on that, if, when we come to that. Probably why we leave that open, so we don't, again, traffic's based on lots of criteria that come in. It is a science that they, they use and formulas, and it's all based on size of roads, location of those roads, to wherever you're getting to and from, so it, that's why they don't really hold it to a, a fast, hard, hard rule of X amount of exits for X amount of lots because it all depends on, if I'm traveling eight miles on a 50-foot residential road, I probably want more. But if I have a 106-foot road within X amount of feet, then that probably goes into the equation of what would be required. So that's why they probably don't go to a hard and fast X amount of lots. Got to have that, they'll base it on whatever traffic engineering studies are, are practical. Hope that answers that question.
30 lots, is that specifically, are they known where the 30 lots are?
Not yet. But if I'm a developer and I'm not going to speak for myself, just speaking, those 30 lots are going to be really close proximity to Marlberry Drive or Way. I mean, it's just the dollars and cents. Those 30 lots will be probably the 30 closest lots in there. I mean, he could put them anywhere, but again, if he's plating out a final plat for 30 lots, he's not going to spread that thing all over and put a lot up here and here and here. He's going to keep them very clustered, very close to Marlberry. And again, I'm not trying to speak for him, but-
Economically, he's not going to want to pave a lot.
That's right.
Just put them right there close by.
So the closest 30 lots is probably the 30 that you would see built until roads come into play that allow him to, to go beyond that.
Hey Drew, with your ballpark experiences, we were, we're looking at the map of the northern part there where the proposed plat abuts the Stukey Farm lots. See there?
I didn't hear.
What's, what do you, what would you say the approximate lot size of those two lots is there?
I, I would probably guess those are probably around the eight, 8,500. I can actually, if you want, I can, I've got the plat here if you want to know exactly what they are. But I'm going to guesstimate it, they'll be at 85 to 95.
Okay. Then as you, you cross the park there and then continue south, those, those three there are significantly larger. Those are probably in the 11 or 12?
I would, yeah, knowing, they're, they could even be bigger. They probably might be 12, 13, maybe even to 14, those ones because of, again, cul-de-sacs do that to you. Everybody loves to own a, a, a lot sometimes in the back of the cul-de-sac because you get a lot of extra. But then again, it's hard to use it because it's in a triangle form, so.
And as you continue south, down past Marlberry, you'll notice there, when we get to the cottages there, it's, it's kind of a fascinating snapshot, just that, this linear progression. Because Stukey Farms has so much variation that's on there. So you've got smaller lots, park, and the estate lots, and then almost higher, high density there on the bottom. It's-
Right.
I don't, I'm not sure how you could feather-
Or try to.
Or try to feather that type of diversity.
Well, and that kind of helps to go back because I do know a lot of history of the meadows, where it started out. Uh, the original approval by our planning commission and, and the city council, any of the lots looks maybe just a slight bit bigger than what you see with the Warner Gateway. And there was no park, um, because they had, their drain is designed to go elsewhere. Market demand came back and the developers of Stukey Farms realized they had to make bigger lots because people were saying, I'd love to build down here, but your lots are just a little small for my liking. So they came and amended their plat on phase one, made, you know, eliminated one out of four lots, they would make then three. Um, some of the homes already had homes built on them, these smaller ones that you see in here. Those are right around the 7,000, 7,500, that, they had to stay that way because they had homes on them. Um, but around the perimeter, they, they came in and amended because the market was just telling them, we gotta, we gotta go up a little bit bigger. And then after a while, they realized they had a drainage problem. Thus, the park came about. And, um, and so that's, you know, like they were saying is that it, it really is a detention basin, but it's a, an amenity because the developer was wise, I would have done the same thing if, you know, you could, and he built a nice park in it. But first and foremost, it's a detention pond. Um, but it is a great amenity for, for that development. And that's a little bit of history of the meadows as it's gone. It, they started out much like, you know, slightly bigger. Not much than this, but then it ended to this because of the market demand, and, which is fine.
It's interesting because if we take another project, just on the other side of Washington Field Road into the north a little bit, and Randy, I think your firm was the engineer on this one as well, was Steeplechase. And I remember many of the, the same citizens in, that are here tonight that were, were here for that. It came in and it was straight zoning adjacent to a planned unit development, and they were able to take advantage of, of, of the zoning. But I find it interesting, and I hope memory serves correct, but, and Randy, you can help me on this, but didn't you come back after and amend that plat for larger lots because of the, of the way that the market responded to that?
Yeah, because Steeplechase kind of went through the same thing, but it's because it changed hands. So it went from one builder to the different builder to a different builder, like different ownership, but yeah.
But they brought it back with, with larger lots.
Yeah, but when you say larger lots, it's an R16 subdivision as well.
I know, I, I remember that went very well.
So by large lots, we're talking, um-
Let me just say, let me just say larger, 8,000?
Yeah. That's the large lots. I think the problem was Steeplechase's lots were about 90 feet deep, and that's a pretty shallow lot. So that, they were struggling with building.
I, I look at the majority of, the majority of these lots, maybe 75% seem to me, and I haven't done the math, I was hoping you guys would have some numbers for me, but it looks like the majority, maybe three quarters of the lots are in the 6,000 square foot range. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I would, I can, I can do, I could have broke it down. I didn't know if, in fact, in the planning commission meeting after lengthy discussion before Commissioner Williams gave his motion, he stated, I love the lot size as a real estate agent, love the lot size, I have nothing wrong with the lot size and am in support of it. And, um, I like personally feel the lot size, this is my personal opinion, feel the lot size is very, um, needed for this area. Carl's doing a great job with the market that he's hitting, it's a little bit larger, Walt Plum subdivision to the north, which Ants has got their model up, they're doing their grand opening here in a couple of weeks. Those are R18 lots. And there's 222 of those R18 lots. So the area is kind of overwhelmed, like, not overwhelmed, but there's a lot of R18 lots available. So this is kind of hitting a market. Carl has, um, his cottages are a completely different market than this. You know, he's doing a high-end, you know, detached, higher density project.
And that's why it's, it's, it's difficult to compare the densities on that project to this project because it's a completely different market. But we talk about words of like in harmony and various lot sizes and eight to 10,000 on the larger side and, you know, smaller lots adjacent to the corridor and larger lots adjacent to the meadows. And I'm just wondering if, if maybe we as a city have been better to work with than maybe you as a developer. Are there any concessions that you're willing to make as far as lot sizes and, and the sizes of those lots, um, in certain areas?
Maybe, maybe I'd, I'd even offer a proposal, Mr. Church.
Yes, sir.
As I look at it and, you know, if you just, so let's look at Marlberry Way. Kind of to the south is into the, into the cottages and I guess my proposal would be you look at to the north, that, that far westerly row of homes or of lots, lots one through 12. Those are kind of the most drastic, I guess, of the contrast. To the east of those, on the end of each of the, kind of the, the blocks there, you've got larger lots that are, that are, you know, that's where some of your largest lots are, is on the, on the far westerly end of each of those. But if there could be some form of a, an adjustment on those lot sizes, lots one through 12, maybe even removing a lot or two and making those a little bigger to, to, to allow that to feather in with the other one. Um, to me, that helps accomplish kind of the consistency in feathering. You've got the larger lots to the, to the east of that. Um, and then south of Marlberry Way, I'm not sure there, there would need to be any adjustment given the nature of what it, what it abuts up against.
Mr. Signaller, thanks for your comment. I'll now disclose my strategy. When I sat with Drew, uh, a month or so ago, uh, Drew brought up the very same comment. He said, right here, it would be nice to have a little bit bigger lots. And I said, yes, and I'm okay to do that. We had planned to do that, and I said, Drew, I don't want to do that at this time. I need egress through there for sewer. You see that third segment in there?
Lot number 10?
Yeah. Drew points out the egress, the, right there is a egress for a sewer lateral. And we have to go a bit across private property in order to achieve that. And so in order to work with the developer, it was our hoping, it was our hope to work with the planning commission, then the city council, to obtain our plat approval, and then to go and work with them, taking out a lot or two, expanding those in exchange for egress, which is in the city's benefit to be able to connect the sewer from one subdivision to the other. Otherwise, we have to build that ground up much higher and build the homes up high, blocking the residents' view. That's fact, we don't want to go there, we're not interested in scare tactics. Carl and I have a great relationship, but it's good to have something to negotiate with. And if you think that this is strategy on my behalf laying this out now, Drew can attest to the fact that this discussion was had. I acknowledged it, and I acknowledged that I needed it as a bargaining chip to obtain egress right there.
So just help me with clarity on the sewer.
Yes, sir.
Where would the sewer connection be taking place? Would it, would it be inside the, the basin there, or is it in that roundabout road and the, and the other?
Inside the circle.
Inside the circle, so you're crossing the basin to the circle? And then if you'll just restate again, the, the, the thought that you had about how to accomplish that? You mentioned maybe-
Yeah, right there.
I do.
That's the sewer, before we were proposing like it, the city originally wanted a stub road, and that was a no-go.
Stub road to nowhere, basically.
Well, no, to connect, to connect the cul-de-sac.
And then we put the park in the middle?
Well, just that way the sewer would be in a roadway, the storm here to be in a roadway, but it just really upset the neighbors at Stukey Farm, rightfully so. I bought it into the cul-de-sac, and then I learned this road was going to tie through. I personally would be furious. I mean, if you buy it in Marlberry, you know it's going to continue on. But cul-de-sac's a little different story. So before, we had a little easement area, a decent gap, which was afraid that would provide access to the park. So to prevent the residents of Warner Gateway from walking over to private park, the latest easement on our plat now, to the dash line in lot 10, that's just a big deal easement. So that would take the storm water historically through to this detention basin and on through. So that's the big location, the sewer sits right here in the end of the cul-de-sac. So we need to pull our sewer through. The property drains to that point, so in order to, if we were to avoid the sewer connection, we have to just fill up the property with dirt and get it to drain back around now. More of that's blocking views.
Where else would the sewer connection occur?
Marl, Marlberry.
Marlberry?
Yeah, it's that, because that line right there you're looking at, that's the man.
Okay.
So, Mr. Signaller, to answer your question, yes, that is something that we've considered and, and something that we're very willing to do. We're very willing to work and help this be good for them. When you're dealing with two private entities, you, you need a bargaining chip, that's the bottom line. It's, we need to cross private property and we'd like to give up a lot or two in exchange for something. I, I hope you see that as a sensible strategy on our behalf.
I, I do. Uh, as I look at the overall map, I, I see the higher density against the Parkway, and that makes sense to me. And it also makes sense that we'd, we'd try and maybe feather a little bit and, and ease the transition on the other side.
Absolutely, I, I'm in agreement.
I've got to say, on the feathering issue, I've consistently voted against any project where there was an abrupt change like we're seeing here. You know, you move into a larger lot and you have a right to believe that you're not going to have an abrupt change. And when you have probably 75% of your lots in 6,000 square foot range, next to some of those probably 12, 13,000 square foot, you're going 50% reduction in size. I understand you're saying concession maybe be delete a lot or two, I don't know if that's enough. I'd rather, and then you take into account the traffic issues. Hey, well, I would almost say, let's not come back until you get your other access points so we know exactly what we're talking about versus, let's do 30 and, uh, see where it goes at that point. If you're coming in with this project out of these 162 lots and half of them are in the 6,000 range and the rest were various sizes, be much more comfortable about that and then have feathering along that border there. But those, those are my concerns. I can see these folks have issues with the drastic lot size change, the traffic, the drainage, and the lack of ingress and egress points. And then I look at that and, you know, there are some very slight variations in lots, you've got a few on the far end, but if you look at it in a map, it's almost everything's the same in there. And if the planning commission had asked those questions and says, yeah, we're going to kind of have variations, I don't think that's really the variation they had in their mind at the time they did the zoning change and or at least recommended it to us.
So Councilman Trimmer, if we, if we just imagine that that far left row of houses were gone and the, and the next was just scooted over, are those lot sizes in the ballpark of what you would feel comfortable with as far as a, a transitionary?
I think you're talking about on that, on that, on that row on the borderline there.
Yeah, you just imagine that public street and the row of houses are gone, and then that, that one now is on this, on the border that was vacated.
Yeah, you can do something like that. And I can see down to the bottom where if those little squares really are low dense, very low density, then I can see the very bottom on the other south of Marlberry Way, I can see that being smaller with a lot of variation. I'm just having a heartburn looking at that, that way, so it's not what I would have envisioned.
A comment for you, if I may. Uh, all of this ground right here is collapsible soils. And so it all has to be saturated with water.
Maybe if you even built there then. Except if it's all collapsible soils. I've seen a ton of lawsuits over that for years.
Are you mistaking that with clay versus collapsible soils?
You've got a mixture of everything. You get in there, you get collapsible soils, you're going to have to over excavate or what are you going to do?
Well, you over excavate typically when you have clay present. And in this circumstance, it's collapsible soils. It's a condition that's easily dealt with. Uh, you have to soak it and sink it. In Carl's circumstance, he's able to do that because he owns a number of wells in the area, so he's able to use his own water and do that very efficiently. Rest of the property in this area doesn't have that luxury and will have to use culinary water. It's a very expensive development process. And so to that point and one other, you know, you say, maybe I should wait until I get my second egress point. 35 acres is a lot of ground to sit on and pay taxes on while you're being held hostage by somebody else.
It's also though, I've seen a lot of projects where we've approved the development, and the developer goes under and then the, then the improvements never get in either, you know, and it changes hands and something else comes up. So as a city, we have to say, okay, what is really best for the citizenry? Not the fact that the developer's got money sitting on 35 acres, but what's best for all of us in this thing, you know? So I'd rather have a bird in the hand than 162 lots in the bush, sitting there hoping it will work. You know, that's, that's just my views of it. And so if you, if you're saying, hey, let's, we can rethink this and come back, maybe to something more in harmony and consistent and take away, mitigate some of the traffic concerns at this point. I'm only one voice, but you're kind of getting a feel for what mine had at this point.
No, I understand where you're coming from and I respect your con- No, I understand where you're coming from, and I respect your comments, and thank you for the direction that you're providing. Would ask that the traffic issue maybe be stricken, because we have addressed that issue, and even the city's come back and said, traffic study and so forth, there's, traffic's not an issue. I do understand that you would like to see some bigger lots along that western side, and that that would make you feel better.
More variation.
Yeah, more.
I understand from your point of view, and I'm not I'm not naive to that either, because every time you make a bigger lot, you're not going to get that incremental income of two smaller lots, right? So I'm aware of that. You have to do a cost benefit analysis of whether your profit margin's sufficient to do it.
It is a challenging piece of property to develop, but that's okay. That's the burden of the developer. I respect that. We we lost our second access point when BLM condemned part of the property.
Yeah, you had headaches there, yeah, the way the road alignment's changed and all those things.
But again, that's.
The access will work itself out as.
Part of being the developer.
The access, I said, will will work itself out, or it won't somewhere after thirty lots. But I think what I'm getting the vibe is that you're willing to work with us on on some of those lot sizes, and maybe bring back a an amended platte that that takes into account some of our wishes, to show that in good faith, you can work with us as we work with you in good faith.
I think that's the way everything works. I mean, that's that's the way things go forward. We we worked through this with the city planners, and ultimately, you're the decision makers, and if that's where you stand, it's a reasonable request, one that obviously we considered. If we do it beforehand, we lose our bargaining chip. But that's already been disclosed. It's out, so it is what it is.
We would have made you put in the park, too.
What's that?
So I'm gonna go back to this little part of the map.
I don't think, I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Signaler. I don't think we lost our bargaining chip. To not have that sewer easement is very detrimental to those residents. Those homes have to be built up as much as six, six feet or eight feet. Eight feet. And so nobody wants that. So I don't think that that they will be hard-nosed about that, but.
Yeah, they're not gonna want somebody looking in their backyard.
No, that's very detrimental.
Yeah, that's more harmful than just lots of lots. Having having elevated neighbors creates both drainage issues, but also view and other things.
Yes. Mr. Signaler, cut you off. Sorry.
Oh, it's fine. I I cut people off a lot, too, so I probably deserve it. This part of the map that I'm kind of obsessing with there, you know, I'm taking Marlberry Way as our our southerly boundary. I count six platted lots on the east side of that public street, and I'm gonna call the detention area two of them. So kind of on that north-south from lots one to twelve on the east side, sorry, on the west side, I I'd say there's eight lots. Do you think it'd be reasonable that the lots one through twelve could become something like lots one through eight, that that you could could feather it down to maybe eight differently sized lots in there to to give it a little better transition?
Yeah. That's more than we had planned on, but that's, you know, if that's what it's going to take.
Sure.
That presents a nice buffer. Those lots, then, across from that are bigger. You're going to get homes with three-car garages and so forth. That's what that's going to create, and that should make the residents of the meadows much happier. It's not going to meet all of their concerns, because they don't want traffic going across Marlberry Way and so forth, but that's part of development is.
This council gets, hears a lot of concerns about just development creating new traffic, and it's always a real issue. It's also an issue that we don't have a lot of leeway. If we build the roads correctly and intend them to be publicly used, the the next developer over has the right to access those.
In answer to your question, yes, we could live with that.
Okay, we we do have the ability to kind of work with developers on lot size and and kind of transitions a little bit.
We would have proposed two, but we'll accept your four.
I I would probably add, too, just as you feather this time from west to east, maybe some larger homes on the west side, larger lot sizes on the west side as opposed to the east, but I would leave that to your discretion to.
And so are you saying, then, as I get beyond that west border inward a bit?
Yeah, I would just see, I'd like to see a little more feathering of larger lots as you approach the corridor, because I I realize that you're in a you're in a pinch. I mean, you've got the corridor on the east, you've got the BLM on the north, and you've got a PCD on the on the south and the west side, so it's it's tough, but. The interesting thing is, if you if you were to kind of categorize where his larger lots are, is they're all kind of just slightly to the east of that westerly road.
They are, they are pretty good-sized lots after that point, Mr. Staley, as you look there. Those are, as we looked at the sevens and the eights and the nines, those were where the bigger lots were. And I think the question that you were trying to get at with me before was directly next to there, and and did I see a a challenge there, and you know, I'm tying it into what's below, but certainly, you know, that needs to change, and and we didn't know that. We're hoping to hoping to negotiate with that, but acknowledged.
We certainly appreciate your willingness to work and address our concerns. Obviously, we'd like to see what a new proposal is.
Well, Carl's also a very close friend. He asked me if I was ready to arm wrestle as I walked in the door tonight. I thought I need to pick a different person to arm wrestle with, because he wins.
I usually wrestle with him about road names.
Well, apparently, you lost on Marlberry. No, Carl is a great friend, and I have a great deal of respect for what he did, and and as a resident, I would fight for the same things. I'm very respectful of what they're doing. We don't plan to use Marlberry Way. We were hoping to work something out with Carl where we could put in a temporary road coming out, going through that subdivision, run all of our construction traffic through there. You know, we're we're conscientious of that, but you don't throw out everything right now. That makes it very difficult then to do things down the road, so.
Well, we've worked with with Mr. Larson and on Stewki Farms in the past, and he's always been very forthright and honest in his dealings with us, and I imagine that the two of you working together.
We have a great relationship.
Agreements. It it sounds like you both need each other to a certain extent. Access is still a big challenge, and and Stewki Farms is a big development, so I don't know their timeframe on 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 developing to the south. BLM to the north, good luck there.
Thank you.
But you've you've got some challenges, but I appreciate you being willing to to bring back a revised platte. Just a- a- and also to try to maybe continue to get input from the citizens, you know, the existing property owners who have a stake in the adjacent developments. To to the extent that you can work with, and that 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 always helps to be, you know, a good neighbor like that.
Absolutely.
You know, and we're not naive. We realize you can't please everybody all the time.
Agreed.
Right, so. Definitely would love to see.
It's nice to have the feedback. It it's very helpful, and it's much appreciated. We walked away a little frustrated last time because of some of the recommendations that were given by the commission, and they were hard things to fix and and to understand. This is very quantifiable and very doable, and so it's appreciated. In this circumstance, help me understand how we proceed forward, please. A unique circumstance where we sat here and we talked about things, so.
Here's what I might might recommend, Mayor, and this is your meeting. But as a council member, I can make a recommendation, and probably at some point, I would recommend that we table this item. It's not a public hearing, but if the mayor wants to hear some input from some of the neighbors, I think civil and positive comment would be would be a good thing tonight, but I think ultimately, what my recommendation is, would I would make a motion that we would table this item, let you continue to work with your engineer and work with staff to accommodate some of those directions that we've given tonight, and then that we would readdress this for an up or down vote at a future meeting.
Okay.
And if you're, if you are willing to make some adjustments, and I think if we were gonna let the neighbors speak, it's probably better after the adjustments are made, so we're not just shooting blanks.
Are you folks okay with that? You wanna talk now, or you wanna talk after we see the adjustments? Carl, would you mind coming up and addressing some of that? Your thoughts, and thanks, Corbin. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And a couple of, one or two other comments?
This is Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
You don't want to go till Thursday?
No.
I mean, can I? Oh, no, I. Oh, I'm kidding. You know, I do have a lot of thoughts about this, quite frankly. And yes, I have met with Corbin. We have become friends, but yet also we're friends. I'm still ready for that arm wrestle a little bit. And I'll tell you why. Quite frankly, and I'll, I have to be just forthright with you, too. When that property used to be the Watson property, I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. And that piece of property, quite frankly, is why the southern Parkway came to an abrupt halt once it reached Warner Valley area. And we sold UDOT a portion of our property to complete the southern Parkway down to the Warner Valley interchange, and then on down to the corner of Stewki Farms. One of the things that is probably important for you to understand is that this property used to be forty-one point five acres, I believe it was, that Mr. Church is talking about. And he sold, which I don't envy him, because we had this conversation a long time ago, a good portion of the property, which went from forty-one point five down to thirty-five point eight-four. So the southern Parkway could continue across there. So he has substantially done okay by selling it, and I would have probably done the same thing. We even had conversations along that route. However, Brandy, I'm sorry, we never had that conversation directly as far as those two spots coming to the south. We did have a conversation relating to that, if I were to purchase that piece of property. That property was presented to me as a possibility of buying. I looked at it strongly. And when push came to shove, Mr. Church came back to me with essentially double the price that we had somewhat agreed upon. And I told him, you know, Corbin, I don't need an extra thirty-five acres that much. I've still got five hundred and seventy acres left. And our situation is this. I don't believe in trying to stop other developers. I really don't. However, I believe in doing due diligence, which to me probably wasn't done properly to start with on the Watson property. Absolutely right. It does, it is very expensive to develop that piece of property. All of it. I couldn't have done it. Water available to us that we do. Another thing, and that is, he even said to make the sewer work any other way than to bring eight feet of field in. That's all you could do except to go through that piece. Now, a bargaining chip, you know, I have to look, when I develop a piece of property, I have to look at integrity, quite frankly. And for me, it didn't make sense for me to come in and put this many parcels right next to the people that I had already sold to and do that right. And so it was done in a way that I was trying to mitigate some of those possibilities. If we'd have purchased that property, there would have been open space all along that boundary of the property that he's talking about. And not only there would have been open space, we'd have had walking paths that followed in with Stewki Farms, walking paths and tree-lined corridors and all kinds of other things. That's pretty much our mode in Stewki Farms is to have a high amenity area that's good for the public. Now, as far as the park is concerned, yes, we did change that from lots to park, and the reason that we did that, quite frankly, is the in other ways, but I came back to the city and said, what about if we did this, we could make this a park instead? And we exchanged it for some of our other open space that we will have in the property down the way to ways. So, and quite frankly, I've got just over one point two million dollars into that park in lots, in all of the amenities that we've put in at the walking paths and everything else. Now, it's easy to say that we can just let the other people come and play on it, and basically, I didn't have a problem with that originally. I mean, you can ask me any questions you want, and I will tell you, as far as access is concerned, no, I'm not into giving two accesses to the south. Yet did say in our development agreement that we would give one. Now, and where that lays is very important, where that one comes in is very important to the integrity of our project that we're planning for the future. I will stand here and tell you, I don't know when that's going to happen for sure. There has been no discussion with me. Now, Brandy, at one time, tell me if I'm wrong, it did mention to me that the best place for the sewer to go would be into that cul-de-sac. Not necessarily for me, not necessarily for our residents. I don't want to block them off, but what I do want to do is I want to maintain the integrity of our project and make sure that it's done properly. And if I have anything to say with it, that the other one is done, you know, with integrity, also keeping in mind the importance of the public. These people that have already purchased in Stewki, they're already part of the city. I I can answer your questions forever if you want me to, but yes, I I have a problem with it the way it is designed. I have a problem thinking that a bargaining chip is, you would come back in and say, we'll drop four lots if you'll give us that sewer. Be honest, after the, and Corbin, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but after the planning commission meeting, we had a discussion. And I said, why don't you get back to me and let's talk about this? And he says, I will be back a week from Thursday, and I'll I'll give you a call. Corbin, has that call come? Okay, and see, that's what I say, what I mean. You have to follow up. You have to do due diligence. You have to do what you're saying that you're going to do. There's a lot of things happen out here in the air, but it's different when they actually happen on the ground. And I am, of course, willing to talk. There are some things that it's quite frankly. We do respect. I respect a lot of things. I respect all of the council. Everybody has been great to work with. The city's been great to work with. It's not easy. Being a developer isn't easy, but I knew that when I got into it. My due diligence on Stewki Farms started in nineteen ninety-three, when it was still Red Hawk. And I think we're a few years away from nineteen ninety-three. But what I'm saying is, it's very important as a developer to do your due diligence before you ever purchase a piece of property. And that's, I'm open to any other questions.
Obviously, we've, we know you have issues with proposed development. What is it that you would like specifically to see to be changed in order for you to feel comfortable with it?
You know, I I'm not here to tell him how to. I'm not. I think that's more up to the council. I think that's more in your realm. And then there's a bit of few things said that maybe are a little bit wrong. You all understand what a PCD is. I don't think that most of the people in this room understands what a PCD is. I spent four years planning and working and working with the city closely before the PCD ever came into being. And that had to do, this is a planned community development. And Corbin is right. There are different sizes of lots. But there again, that's in a PCD. We plan one community at six thousand lots, another one at eight, another one at ten, another at twelve, some at three quarters of an acre. And besides that, we have twenty-four acres of lakes, fifty-eight acres of commercial space. And comparing his to a cottages doesn't quite fly, quite frankly. Where we're putting the bulk of the cottages, we have an approval of twelve units per acre.
I think, I think we, I think we all understand the difference between those things. You know, you've talked about developers' rights. You've got a right to go in and whatever's consistent with zoning. They have the right to at least apply to have that done. And then it's our discretion to decide whether it's really in harmony and all those things.
Exactly.
And you know, and I guess I'm trying to pin you down a little because, you know, as a developer next door, obviously, we're going to make a decision at the end of the day. But if you want to itemize your concerns, we can always put that in the bag of what we're going to
Access. Access. Access and sewer. And I don't think that's my, I don't think I'm required to provide him all of these things to just say here, because we have put literally millions of dollars into the property to bring all of the utilities out there that we have. Now, I'm not saying, because also there were people before me that brought, you know, to the point where we tied into it, which was down by Stonehenge. It was quite an expense to bring it up to there. And I'm not arguing that point. The part that I would like to do is, I liked your recommendation of aboning it and coming back to the drawing board and seeing if there's a like thing that we could come to that would be of benefit to all of the city. Not just people that will live in Warner Valley Gateway, but in Stewki Farms and the rest of the community. Big thing has to do with access. I have visited with the fire marshal about this whole. Not trying to stop it or anything. I just asked him a few questions. And he said, always, always. And I have run into that in every part of the development. Always access is the big problem. Now, to give you a little bit of history also, the homesteads right across the street where we have lots from ten thousand square feet up to twenty thousand square feet. A little over six months ago, the city came to me and says, Carl, we would like to move one of the streets on Stewki Farms Parkway about three hundred feet to the west, approximately, maybe a little bit less than that. We had already gone through all of the planning, everything for that. And I said, okay. So we've done that. That cost me approximately six months in time to go back into the planning commission to come before you to make that plan change. And that's what you do if you're a developer and you want to be cognizant of what works for the city and what works for us. Yeah, it was a hard thing to do. It has sat there graded. I've spent four hundred thousand dollars already on the grading that took place. And we sat there for six, eight months waiting to do that. All I'm saying is, I'm not asking you to deny this tonight. Choose the way you have stated it. I think it's very fair to table it and bring it back at another time when some things
And I think, rather than talking about hypotheticals, maybe we'll get Mr. Larson to cooperate on this access or not. It would surely be nice to, if you'd had that communication with him, you'd come in and say, look, Carl, come up and join me here at this podium. Here's what we've agreed to. That's why time is necessary to work these things out so we know what we're doing and not just speculating about what we hope we'll be doing.
I have told Corbin in the past, I believe in talking head-on with each other, not playing around. Let's sit down and talk. And that's the way I believe things should be done. And that's after our last meeting. I thought that was going to happen and it didn't take place. Waiting for that phone call.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Carl. I think before you make that motion, I know there's somebody out there would probably like to make some statements and comments. But I think we might want to wait until after we get a revised plat and that you look at it so that you can, and at that point, make those comments too.
My name is Richard Elsmore. I'm a resident of Stewki Farms. You know, I just want to make some comments and input. Maybe this will help Mr. Church in his re-rendering of this. In case that this proposed development is in harmony with Stewki Farms, and it really isn't. I mean, you've got all these lots, and that's one thing. When you take a look at the appearance of Stewki Farms, where you have the larger lots, you have the walking paths, you have the park, you have all these other amenities or these aesthetics that are there, as opposed to this development that he's recommending that is completely sterile and devoid of that. As he's re-rendering this, I think that the members of our community would agree, let's integrate some of those types of processes into this so that at least we have something that looks comparable to what's next door. I'm all for development. I mean, I wouldn't be living in Stewki Farms had it not been for the whole concept of development. I get that. But at the same time, I think that the concerns of the people that live in Stewki Farms need to be addressed with Mr. Church's rendition of what he's going to come up with. And I think that if it's going to look the same or if it's going to be comparable or in harmony, I think it needs to be truly in harmony with what's currently there. One comparable thing that was done, it was said regarding Marlberry Way, that it used to be kind of Washington Fields Road. No, it is not like Washington Fields Road was. That is a side street, a narrow side street. Trying to choke all this traffic into there, it's going to be, it's going to be a hazard to the people that live on that street. Another concern that I've got was a comment that was made regarding the BLM. It's interesting that Mr. Church is willing to go to the BLM in Salt Lake City, three hundred and some odd miles to the north, when the local BLM here, as I would understand it, has jurisdiction over this land. And the BLM representatives here, and you've got copies of the letter, have stated that there are no immediate plans of that area north of there, this BLM land. So my concern would be, let's bring in the local BLM representatives that are familiar with this piece of property, the parcel that's there, as opposed to somebody from three hundred and some odd miles north that don't have that kind of an input on this. Again, that's pretty much all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and motion then that based on
Sorry, Councilman Stanley.
My name is Jim Lilly White, also resident of, Jim Lilly White, also a resident of Stewki Farms. I like the comment where two people have mentioned buffer zone between Stewki Farms and this new development. And I would propose that perhaps we could put that buffer in there as I show in green. And I've also talked with the BLM and they indicated that it will probably be five years from now before they make a decision on what to do because that's a protected environment there. And they have to change that to a non-protected environment. And that will probably take about five years to get that done. So as far as having anything happen there soon, it probably won't happen. But I know the city is also talking about putting in a park in that BLM property. And the BLM is talking about that too. They're both working on that. So if that does in fact become a park, it seems like we need to have an access to the park. And this open space going to the park along with a bike path seems like it would be a great alternative to not only provide the buffer, but to provide a nice access getting to the park. The, as far as the drainage, I've increased the size of the retention pond because I'm a little leery that there could be blockage in the discharge point of that retention pond as there has been on the retention pond that's up by the Warner Valley, where the Warner Valley Road comes into the Southern Parkway. You can look at that retention pond and it's blocked off. And I would be concerned that this ought to be designed for about a twenty-four hour hold on a hundred-year storm. So that would make that larger and it could become a park. You could grass it in and it could be very nice and amenable to what we already have in Stewki Farms. So looking ahead, I know there are some plans for a bike path that goes up along the parkway and then back around. But I don't think you can have too many bike paths and walking paths in Washington. We moved here because of the open space. We know that it's going to be developed. I was, when I first graduated from BYU, I went to San Jose and there were some beautiful orchards there. We moved right next to those beautiful orchards. And within five or six years, they were all gone to development. And in Lehigh, they've done it right. They converted an entire irrigation canal to a pathway that goes fifty miles. And if you've ever ridden it on a bike, you can see residents riding that all the time. And it's a beautiful parkway. It goes by farmland. It goes by subdivisions that are high density. And nobody really cares because they can get on that pathway and go clear to Bridlevale Falls or clear down to Jordan River Parkway.
You been on it?
Yes.
So why?
It's wonderful. It's twenty-three miles from Lehigh after Bridlevale Falls, and it's beautiful. That's all. Any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Lilly White. Appreciate it. I hope, Corbin, you think about these things as you try and redo this. We're going to allow Councilman Stanley to listen, if you want.
What was just presented?
We could get it. Jim, could we get a copy of that? Is it in our email?
See that email, so maybe we've accomplished the transfer right here, yeah.
All right, Councilman Stanley, fire away.
All right, very good. I'll go ahead and motion that we table a preliminary plat for Warner Gateway located east of Mulberry at approximately forty-six hundred south in order for the applicant to modify the plat and communicate with adjacent property owners. And he will bring that plat back at a future date to be determined.
I'll second the motion so far as it is to just table it. I don't want a second. Whether he brings it back or not, I'll leave that up to the applicant.
Hi, Sean, hi.
Truman, hi.
Stanley, I second your right.
All right, gentlemen. Thanks, Corbin. Thanks all you folks for coming. It is important that we hear from you.
Mayor, if I may, just because we didn't put a date on that, I really don't know how to get out the word on that. So I don't know if we want to just tell everybody to keep an eye on our agendas, which is hard to tell people to do.
In fact, I struggled with that in my motion because I know typically we like to have a set date, but I don't know how long it's going to take for that to happen. So I, I left it open to a future date to be determined. But if we want to determine that or just wait for re-notification, I don't know.
Let's give it a second to see if they can
Meeting dates we've got. Twenty-six.
Twenty-third. Ninth and twenty-third, I'm pretty sure.
Would September twenty-third be too soon?
It's a month from now. No.
No, the lake's There's no meetings there.
I'll give you about four weeks.
Can I just inject September twenty-third as the date?
I'll second the injection.
Okay, the injection's been seconded.
Nice, nine.
I'll just say hi.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, it's twenty-third, September. Hey, we'll move on. Item B, consideration to approve a preliminary plat for Eagle Summit Estates located south of Westgate Hill, approximately thirteen hundred west, two hundred north. Applicant is Jay Keltner.
Well, Elmo's already lit up, so we'll just stay on Elmo if that's all right. And we'll switch if we need to, in case we need to point. As stated, the applicant's request and approval of the preliminary plat for Eagle Summit Estates, that the applicant is wishing to develop thirty-nine lots on an area covering thirty point two-three acres. Location of this particular project is owned, single-family residential, fifteen thousand square foot minimums. This particular location is also within the hillside protection overlay zone of Washington City. Thus, the applicant was required to make application to the Hillside Protection Board and receive recommendation slash approval from that board. Just to note, there are extra conditions of approval as outlined by the Hillside Board. And they're found in your conditions portion at the end of the report. And I'll just point out that they are, I think it's number twelve. It's condition twelve with A through E. So just to make note, those are from directly the Hillside Board. Now, the proposed subdivision conforms to the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances at this location. Staffs reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. The planning commission reviewed the request at their August fifth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. And after a lengthy public hearing was held, the planning commission, by a vote of four to one, recommended approval of the preliminary plat for the Eagle Summit Estates to the city council. And that, of course, is based on the findings subject to the conditions outlined in the report. And if I can, just jump to those extra ones that are above and beyond our standard. And that is starting at number twelve. And this is, again, directly from their Hillside Protection Board. A twelve A, a detailed retaining wall design will be made part of the recorded final plat for all walls to be built with the same, for the, to be built the same for aesthetic appeal. Thus, all the walls will be uniform in appearance, which would be consistent in design and color. The design of these walls will be required to be pre-approved by staff. Of course, if it's going to be part of the plat, we'll take a look at that.
Drew, is it expected that there'll be the need for some fairly significant retainage?
Not really. What they'd rather do is actually have a stepping and because the hillside overlay zone only allows you to go ten feet, you can't go above that. So they're going to take effect of that. I don't even know if they really will end up at ten feet. But that would be the maximum just because our hillside protection zone doesn't allow you to go any greater than that.
So are you talking on lots twenty-eight through thirty-eight?
It could be, well, it could be lots, any of the ones that, I mean, the critical ones we found, if we're actually lots thirty-seven, six, and five. The other area concerned was lots twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one is where probably the worst-case scenarios are. And so there will be a stepping of those retaining walls. And so, but we just wanted them to all look alike instead of having somebody come in with a diamond block wall, someone do flat concrete, and then someone come back and do a rock, rockery wall, where we didn't want this variety or hodgepodge. We want it to all be uniform. Right. And, and it is. And, but if you've driven by here, it's really hard to, if you get right down, say, on the main frontage road and try to look up, you don't see anything because of all the trees and everything else. So you almost have to be far away to actually see where those will be. But we still wanted them to be uniform. And so they'll put forth the designs. We're hoping, and we've told them to try to keep natural colors that are already there so they kind of blend in. I think they can accomplish that. They'll probably end up with quite a few rocks out of, when they do the development, that they'll be able to use, I think, on the same site is what we're hoping. Twelve B, the final plat will also have included in the general notes that all lot owners will be required to develop their individual lots according to the hillside protection overlay zone standards. We just want to have that on there as a note so when they buy in and they see that plat, that they realize they are in a hillside protection and there are certain standards that they'll have to meet. A twelve C, all retaining walls will be the responsibility of the individual lot owners, excluding the specific retaining wall on those lots listed the specific retaining wall on those lots listed in letter D, which follows. So let's move on to letter D. Lots 29, 30, 31, 32, 36, 37, and 38 are required to have the lowest-tier retaining walls built during construction of the subdivision. These such retaining walls will be as per the design criteria as mentioned in letter A above. I know we're jumping around telling you to go here and here, but the, the hillside protection board just wanted to make sure that the first and most important retaining walls, the ones closest to the edge, are built by the developer. That's the reason behind that only, is so that it starts out that way, the pattern is set, the design is set, everybody knows what they need to look like, it will be there. And so that's what letter D is basically all about. And that way, we have the developer of the project is going to be more apt to be in care of being careful around that edge and where that needs to be than just say, a contractor that's hired by Joe Homeowner. So that's why we wanted to put that in there, the hillside board did. And 12E, the geological hazard study in hillside review as prepared by AGEC Applied Geotecs must be followed and adhered to as well as the above required items. In the case of any conflicts, the more strict will apply. And the hillside board just felt they wanted to make sure that AGC was making sure that what they design and where they design it is going to be watched by them and specifically them, and that's what the hillside board wanted to make sure was, took place in this particular development. So those were the five criteria that the board came up with as their recommendations. And it was quite fun working with the hillside board and almost all the members, at least the professional sides of it, sit on everybody else's hillside board down here.
Who is on that board?
I wish you wouldn't have asked me that now because there's, I'm going to draw a blank.
They're not necessarily Washington City residents.
They are, they.
There are three residents, there's three engineers, there's a landscape architect, a, a geotech engineer, and then a regular engineer, and then we have three professional, I mean, three residents. Mayor, do you remember who those were? I'm trying to remember.
Lynn Seifus.
Lynn Seifus.
Mike Eaton, did Mike, did he accept?
Yes.
And Quinn Allgood?
Yes, and those are the three citizens from Washington. And they're all good citizens because they have professional experience in different things that help.
They're all over.
They really understood this stuff and really, really did well. Like I say, it was pretty impressive to watch them work, and again, because they've already got experience, it went real smooth. It was a real good, at least on my side, I don't know about the applicant, but. Item number 13, the development will need to provide sufficient easements to accommodate the proposed water system improvements contemplated in the submitted water model for this development prior to any land disturbance taking place in the site. Just to clarify that, they're having to bring water to get to this site, and so we just want to make sure that all the proper paperwork and everything is done before we even start in here, so that we know we're not going to start developing and then they can't get those easements to bring water to the area. So I think they're already in works of doing that because I've had people from Mahoya and a few other subdivisions up there already contact me asking questions about it. So I know they're working towards that. Item number 14, a second access, which is an ingress egress, will be required to be built and tied to a public road on the St. George side of the subdivision. This will be completed before the 31st, 31st lot receives a building permit. Again, we're getting into the fire standards there, that number 30. But those, many of this council hasn't been around that long. This project was discussed many years ago, and we require then that they have an access road out the backside over to St. George, and those many years ago, it was quite the distance. Well, now, it's how many feet away, Brandy, would you say? Maybe 500 feet away, maybe? So you can see, they're just going to have to put in, and it's, and it's been stubbed, right? It's stubbed there, so. Static about it because he's been landlocked for quite a while. So that, that all of a sudden, just because of time, passes of time, really isn't as significant as it was five, seven, eight years ago. Still putting that in our conditions. Last but not least, and I do need to amend this one a little bit as a request by the, the applicant and with the approval of Public Works, but 15 did read, water flows at fire hydrants must be approved by the Fire Marshal and Public Works Department prior to the recording of any lots tied to said hydrants within this subdivision. Well, the applicant developers come to us and said, they're actually going to be bonding upfront to get the final plat approval, so they're not going to build everything per se like we normally, they normally do, so they're going to put up a bond of the 110% required, so they can start selling lot by lot, help pay for the project. So staff is willing to amend that, water flows at fire hydrants must be approved by the Fire Marshal and Public Works Department prior to any building permit issued on a given lot within the subdivision. So any lot that's going to be required within the distance of that particular fire hydrant that's shown on the plat, they'll have to have that one approved by the Fire Marshal and the Public Works Department before a plat, I mean, a building permits issued, that lets them move forward. And we're fine with that, and that's their request. Well, it's going to be installed and the flows will be measured.
I could say approval, that doesn't mean anything to the guy that has a fire.
No, they're, they're going to stand there and they're going to put their flow meter on it, and it's going to have to meet the minimum requirement before the building permit will be issued. That's what that means. So that, can't ask for much more than that, if it's showing that it meets the demand.
I thought you were talking about it just to prove the location.
No. Nope, it's got to be spitting water out at X amount of gallons per, whatever that ratio has to be for the minimum, and that's what that'll be, and they, they understand that. We, we had the same issues in Westgate Hills, we had to go up and do the test before we would issue that out, so they're well aware of that. And that's it for my end of that, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that the council might have for Eagle Summit.
Any questions for Drew?
I noticed that Commissioner Papa voted against it. His concern was the falling rocks then, was that? Or was it?
You know, I'm really not sure exactly if he even stated, now that, I know he was the one who voted against, but you know, I don't know if he ever stated, I think he just felt that he wasn't comfortable with it, and I don't know if he really did. I think he made comments, he was worried about that, he was worried about drainage, and other things that are normal, take, being taken care of in construction.
I think he was on a field trip, too, didn't he?
He asked for the field trip.
Yeah.
I was all for the field trip, there's nothing wrong with field trips. So, it's not at night, you can't see anything. It's a beautiful view up there, though, that's why I kind of wish we would have went on a field trip, but it is a really pretty, pretty piece of property.
Need to show us the do not disturb line and, and talk a little bit about what that means.
I'm just blowing it here because it's all the same, and, and it does change, and I'll tell you why in a minute, but this, to, to make reference to that, this is really those areas that are probably the sheerest of slopes on this, and we just don't want people in there messing with, with the, the area to cause, say, rock problems or anything else. They're going to go and literally as, as Mr. Rogers stated here, that they're going to go in and put in steel, wasn't it, posts and rails, was it? Right at that line, so, that dotted black line, so they know, don't touch anything on that side of the line. Because again, it's all where those, those falls come off.
Does it concave or in some areas on the, on the slope or?
It's following the slope line.
All these, I think, are up high at least, aren't they? I mean, they're right where it starts to fall off.
In fact, we walked the property, we stayed it and walked it, and it fits like where the kind of comes and there's like a gradual slope, and then it sheer cliff drops. So the sheer cliff drop is more like the far back end of it. Right here.
So this, so this fence, the do not disturb line, that fence that will be built along that line will certainly keep people out of that area?
Well, it may not keep them out, I mean, well, they're not going to want to get out there for, unless they're repelling, but, for the most part, but that's just where they can't touch and disturb anything. We have, you know, they can't go out and put anything out. How, how tall were you going to? Three feet, he said.
They can step over it.
Yeah, we're just, the disturb is, we just don't want people out there putting any buildings, again, because it's the hillside protection says you can't do anything out on a certain slope, and those get into those slopes that are, like, say, or this. No disturbing, no disturb. It needs to stay natural. When you buy the lot from that line over, it needs to stay that way.
And along certain portions of that area, there, there holes. Is there a concern that, that if you ask or if you build and bringing utilities, that rocks will fall down, and how do you address that? I'm just, I'm new to this, so.
We'll look them up, I mean, I'd rather to have them answer that, that's, they're, so, yeah, he, he does. But I was just going to finish up, and then these other, this area that downs below where the hashlarks, hashlines change, if you've been up and seen the project from below, say at Canyon Cove and Breeze, there's an area down at the bottom, that's what this representation is down there, and it's just going to be left in the natural open spaces it is right now. Again, they can't, nobody can get to it. It's to just be labeled as common area on the final, I take it. And it, it's just because it's so far removed from height and elevation that it's just going to be left in its natural state. Staley to answer you, some of those homes butt right up against that property line. But today, you know, in today's standard, we probably wouldn't, wouldn't want anybody to be building that close. Years ago. But yeah, if you can bring up the Google, you can see how.
We're on a field trip.
You didn't have to leave your comfort of your seat. They were going to have a whole wall where we can just bring it all up as a 3D motion, and you just sit and like you're going right in there, and it'll happen someday. So if, any other questions for me, or we can invite Mr. Rogers to come up?
Hi, gentlemen, Doug Rogers, I think most of you know, a few old classmates here. Oh, no, we're not old, are we, Gar? In, in the meeting with the planning commission, there was some concerns brought up, and so I went on the 17th and met with the people at Canyon Cove with some of their HOA, I don't know how many of them were part of their leadership or what have you, and discussed these things, and they talked about the rockfall, and I understand it. So probably the, and, and you know, you look at some of those homes, yes, underneath, there's one that, or several right there that are 10 feet off that cliff. They asked me, they said, would you live there? And I said, no, I wouldn't live there, nor I would have, that they're the beginning, but I understand their concerns. Kimball Gardner was at the meeting, you know, he was the developer on that, and I asked him, I says, Kimball, in, in relationship to when Lion's Head was built, when was Canyon Cove built? And he said, almost the same time. And I says, did you have any rockfall issues while they were building up on top? And he said, no. He says, as a matter of fact, my mother's home was probably one of those that was in the most jeopardy, and they blasted and everything going up around Canyon Cove, he said, we never had a problem. He also told me that on that west side, where those houses are close, they cut the rock down, they tried to use a dozer and it wouldn't do the whole thing, so they ended up blasting part of that across there, and I says, did that cause problems with the rocks up above? And he said, no. He says, in both cases, they did not have rockfall issues. And, and so anyway, we, we looked at that, and, and you know, I told him that I would keep them, one of the things they wanted to know is keep updated on the work we're doing. I'll, I'll be the contractor on the job. And with that fence, when we met with the hillside committee, we agreed, we made the proposal and agreed to put the, drill the, because it's all solid rock, we'll drill the steel posts or pipes in and then put the fence around to keep things, we don't want anybody out there, and if a rock happens to roll or anything. But I think that we've addressed the issues very well as to being able to protect them. I mean, they, they were concerned even about people up there throwing rocks off, which is a concern right now as well as it is, and I don't think that's what we need to get into. But I do know that as far as blasting, we do not anticipate any blasting. When they did, Westgate Hills, the portion right next to us, they did not blast, and, and so with the equipment that's available nowadays that can dig that stuff, we don't anticipate that. And like I say, I'll work with people at Canyon Cove and keep them up to date, but I, I think we're well covered on the things that we need to do. Any other questions you might have for me?
I still have plenty of insurance.
Yeah, yeah. A, any more contractor either has to have lots of insurance or he doesn't get in business, so, yeah.
Yeah, just a curiosity, so you're going to need a span, so you're going to put it in concrete, are you taking it out when you're done?
That's a question. I think we're going to leave it there so that as the individual lot owner comes in, they can make a decision, do they want to leave it, do they want to put something else?
For aesthetics, you know?
Yeah, on the same place, whatever it is, they know, and that will help those coming in to buy to know without question. We can't go put a gazebo out on the edge of the hill or whatever we want. I mean, when it says no disturb, it's no disturb. Originally, it said no building, and we changed that in the meeting to go to no disturb, nothing out there at all, no trails, no little rock walls or anything, so. Hey, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a question for Drew, and, and this might have been in the conditions, I just, I.
Thanks, Doug.
Will that do not disturb area be clearly marked on the, on the plat so that when they record on those lots, they, they'll be aware of that, or?
It'll look just like, the final, the final plat will have the same hashing that you see in the preliminary plat, and it'll be labeled no disturb. You know, I mean, if you even fill, maybe I can remember to say, they might even want to put in the general notes what no disturb means. We may come up, but just so people aren't, you know, well, I didn't know what no disturb meant, you know, we'll just try to, but it's going to be hard, because if you leave one thing out, that's the one thing they're going to do. I think no disturb is pretty.
Is it clear enough in your opinion?
Well, someone's always going to be, I mean, I've been doing this too long, and especially the two attorneys know what I mean, they're always going to, well, that's not what I understood, no disturb. Well, I'd like, yeah, why don't you propose it and we'll look at it, and then we can tweak it.
I gotta take exception to that whole whining interpretation of how attorneys talk. I'm just not certain that's how.
I wasn't talking like an attorney, Mr. Starkey, I was saying an individual. I wasn't making a, you know, that voice was for Joe Homeowner. And I'm one, so I can talk like that.
I do know that there's a young lady in, in the audience who would like to address some concerns that they have at Canyon Cove, so.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Russell. You all should have gotten a letter I delivered to the, to y'all last Friday. We did appreciate Doug Rogers coming over and talking to us. It did little to eliminate the concerns that people have that are right below that cliff. You know, yes, we got building permits to draw, to develop those homes along that cliffs, you know, it's been 15 to 20 years, there's been all the storms, all the rocks are, you know, are probably not as stable. We have a concern with that no disturb line, because when you get up there and look at that, as Brandy says, it goes down like this, and a lot of that goes over and back under like this, and here's our homes down below it. When we were at the planning commission, we asked them if they'd please come out and, and go on a field trip, rather than just looking at these maps and see what we're talking about. The Westgate development that's going on up there with the roads and such stuff, our people in those homes are feeling the vibration from Westgate, and it's way back behind where this Eagle Summit's going to be. And they told us about the new hillside committee and what they were looking at and how that they. and what they were looking at, and how that they would evaluate it and make sure that they felt like it was safe to build up on there and wouldn't be hurting any established residents down there. And I got copies of the two hillside meeting notes on this issue. And in the first one on May, on June 23rd, their suggestion, rock fall needs to be addressed, especially for the safety of the development below. And in their recommendations, protection for rock fall contractor for the development. When I then saw the 30, June 30th minutes, none of that was even talked about. It seems like a lot of these things that the rock fall meeting had in the 23rd didn't even go over into the 30th and get on here at all. Like, for instance, they ask, why don't you consider making lot 36 and 38 bigger and eliminate 37? It was never talked about again. When you look at these lots along the way and they talk about the ones that they're gonna have the builders do the retaining walls, those lots that are above us start on number 36, 36, 35, 34, and 33, then 32, 31, 30, and 29 go back into that open space. So they say we're going to require the builder do these retaining walls on 29, 30, 31, and 32, and then 33, 34, 35, that's above our homes. They're not doing any requirement on those. And then they're going up to 36, 37, and 38. Says on those that that no disturb line is about 43 feet and 44 feet. But like I say, a lot of that 44 feet is down like this, that's back underneath like this above our homes. And, you know, hopefully you guys read through some of our concerns. I mean, we would really like you to go out and see it and see if you really think that they're going to be able to build on those lots close to that edge and not affect those homes. We have a dozen homes along there that these people live in. And they're very concerned about it. You know, the other thing is the water flow and they, and reading the notes and, and everything we've seen there in the hillside minutes, they said it'll all be piped to one place. One thing Doug Rogers did tell us is between 34 and 35, they will discharge water down into that open space. In none of the notes that, does that say that will happen? That is that open space that we got a flood out of there last year that flooded. We had damage in six of our homes coming out of there. And, you know, we're hoping that the way the development is built, that their storm drains taking the water away from us, it probably may make it better for us than letting it just come down. But if they're gonna still discharge water down in there, then we need to be assured that the hydrology study said that that was okay and not gonna be giving us more water than, than we have. So, you know, the retaining walls, the rock fall, I mean, I don't know how, they didn't say how they expected the builder to protect us from rock fall. But it doesn't seem to be addressed at all. You know, one of the other things I wanted you guys to be aware of as you read the planning commission notes, they keep talking different people about Canyon Breeze. And Canyon Breeze is a park model home, development next to us. It is further west. And it isn't affected by this at all. Canyon Breeze is who the developer went to to see if they could access, have access into that open area to build a drainage basin. And, you know, Brandy makes the comments in these notes that they tried to work with the neighbors and they're not willing to work with them. Well, that's not us. That's not us. Can, Canyon Cove is who we are, and we're the ones that's right below this. And Kimball Gardner even got up and I asked. So anyway, when Kimball Gardner, our building, our builder got up, he did say, I developed Canyon Breeze. I don't know why he said that. He didn't have anything to do with Canyon Breeze. It was Canyon Cove that Kimball put in. So in my letter, did any of you have any specific questions from what I had in there?
I just want to clarify, you said that eliminating lots 34, 35, and 36 would satisfy your concern?
Eliminate him or taking him back further so they're not so close to us. No, ideally, we'd like to see the, the buildings start on the other side of that road they're putting in there. I mean, when you look at these maps, and I think I gave you guys all a map, she scanned the map with the letter, that this, this piece of sagebrush area is where Eagle Summit's going, and it's just right above our homes. The, this road that you can see back up in here is Westgate. So they'll be putting their new road in and then have those homes that are above us. Those two that are on the end, we don't have homes underneath them. But you know, as far as the community itself, you know, how they would redevelop it to do it if they did eliminate some of those homes. And I don't know why. The hillside people ask them to consider eliminating 37. There wasn't anything in there at all about that. But 36, 35, and 34 are the ones that are directly above our homes. And you know, the planning commission talked like they were gonna come out and look at it. They really did until Doug Rogers come up and said he was gonna put the three foot fence in so that nobody go over it and bother anything back there. And they said, oh, well, that takes care of that. So they decided not to come. Have any of you guys been up there? Have you seen it? So you could, you can understand what our concern is?
Yeah, I do.
Anyway, those are my main questions. I'd like to see the other things the Hilltop Committee come up with addressed. I don't feel like they have been. I think it should be tabled and you guys look, make them come back and say, why did you do this? And what did the builder do because of this? And what are you gonna do about that rock fall?
Drew, do you, do you have an answer to that? How the rock fall issue got out of one thing?
Martin, glad to talk about what happened. And just because of the minute states something in a meeting like that, there's a lot of brainstorming. You have to understand that. Just because it was talked about and someone said, well, I think we had eliminated it, doesn't mean that we've got to come back because you think, oh, that's a great thing I want to have done. We, that's not fair. And I just wanted to point that out. That was just the discussion that was brought out that possibility is because of this. And then when, you know, the, the developer's able to talk to us and say, well, here's what this is, here's what we're gonna do, and things get mitigated. That's what this whole process is about, is mitigation. Always has been, always will be. And so, you know, I, I might even been the one that said, I want that eliminated. I, I do remember when I first looked at it. But it doesn't mean that I'm right. I'm not an engineer. I wish I was sometimes, but I'm not.
What about, what are you gonna do to address rock fall? And then rock fall's never talked about again?
Well, it comes to responsibility that, that we talked about in the planning commission. You were there. And we talked about the one man was up here pounding the pulpit, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna, who's gonna? Well, it comes down to a sense of responsibility by anybody. You're responsible for you. I'm responsible for me. I'm responsible for my kids. You're responsible for your home. It comes down to a sense of, I guess, the way we look at it, a sense of responsibility that that person's gonna have to be responsible when they build up there. They're gonna have to, they know what they're up against. I mean, they'd be a fool not to. And they're just gonna have to be very responsible about how they develop that.
Hey, Brandy, on these lots, 38, 37, 36, 35, and I'm looking at the plat that shows acreages, are those the full lot or just the buildable?
Yeah. But I was really quick, just to get off this rock fall thing to help ease your mind. The reason it wasn't brought up, I was in that meeting, it was brought up extensively. But you have to remember, there was two geotechnical engineers in that meeting. One privately hired by the owner who's sitting there that prepared the rock fall report. And two, one that's appointed by the hillside committee. So both of them have walked this site. Both of them walked physically down that black line, because we put stakes in the ground. So you could go up there and you could stand on it and know exactly where that rock fall is. Neither one of them, the, the one that we hired personally, or the one that was the advocate for the city, had any concern about rock fall. That's why it's not in the notes, because neither one of the geotechnical engineers thought it was an issue. There's, it's required, this hillside committee reviewed extensively the geotechnical report. There's a section in there that talks about rock fall specific. It's standard, every report requires it. And in it, it says there's not a concern. I mean, yes, there's a concern, but is there a concern outside of the norm? They weren't concerned about it. So we did in that meeting discuss it, that the retaining walls that we're talking about, that only specifically list them, it's because the ground rolls. So those little specific areas, it's because in, it, those are where the areas dipped so low that they wanted the builder to put those in. So that's why there's certain lots with retaining walls. All, truth be told, if you're to go out there and maximize your pad, all those lots would possibly have a retaining wall. But the ones where they're specifically listed us to build it, it's because the ground is so low that it's going to have to. The other ones may or may not need them. So that's the clarification of why there's specific lots listed. It doesn't have anything to do with rock fall. Doesn't have anything to do with slope. It's just a height of a wall elevation. Because there again, on the hillside committee sits a civil engineer, and a geotechnical engineer. And that was their concern was height of wall. So it wasn't a rock fall stipulation.
And I would think that our folks may feel better if they saw what these experts said, that they don't feel like it's a problem. All we're seeing is you need to address this rock fall issue, and the contractor needs to be responsible and then silent about it.
Well, I guess the way it's been addressed is the plat you're seeing here tonight. This is what they were comfortable with. I mean, you can see the distance we have labeled as 44 feet. We're 44 feet back from our property line, you know, before we can even start our backyard. So every retaining wall that's gonna be built is gonna be built on that dash line or into the lot. I mean, that 44 feet is a long ways. I invite you to go up there and walk the property. There's lat in the ground. It's probably a little bit confusing.
We've been up there. And like, when you, you answered in the planning meeting, we see surveyor states along the edge of that. And you said that was more for slope. But when you go up there, I think it would be nice if we could see that no disturb line right now, because a lot of that land that it's on, part of that that looks flat on your map is going off the side of the cliff, just like this, on top of our house.
I've personally spent hours walking this property. I'm very confident for that line. As we picked our line based off of the slope map, we had our surveyors go to the site and put lat in the ground. We went out there and walked it and verified that the location was consistent. I mean, and the hillside committee actually does do field trips. They met on site. They walked it the whole, you know, Drew, Drew joined them. I mean, it was, that's how the hillside committee functions.
But anyway, so this geotech report, is that the one it is that, that tells about the rock fall and stuff? May we have it? May we see it?
Is that available? It's a public document, isn't it?
Public document.
But I don't know how I'm supposed to get it.
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation.
We're asking the expert, because she knows it all. She'll tell us Denise.
Anyway, that, that's our main concern. Those people living under those homes are still not comfortable that they are gonna go to bed at night in those back bedrooms while this is going on, especially since their house are vibrating from Westgate already. And then when this construction starts, so.
Thanks, Cheryl. If that document can be made available, I think, once you leave us your email address. Can we do that, Denise? Right. Okay.
So these lots, 37, 36, and 35, the acreage that I see listed there, is that the buildable pad acreage? Or is that the?
It's the entire lot acreage.
So the buildable pad would be less than what?
Less 44 feet by one. So it'd be 40, 45 feet times 120. Yeah, wherever you want to do it, faster.
So 36 and 35 don't have a lot more room to offer no build space. Maybe 34, you could adjust that line a bit. But even then.
It does, if you walk it on the ground, it wouldn't make sense to put it in a no disturb area. The, the zone on this property is an R112, a 12,000 square foot zone. Are you sure? I think it's 12. You, you quoted 15 in planning commission, but it's 12,000 square foot zone. So we're way above and beyond the zoning that we're allowed at an R112.
Just for your reference, lot 37 in the winded area is roughly 19,200 square feet. So there's another 5,300 feet in the, just on lot 37. 36 is gonna be, be even less looking down, because it's only 15, so 80,000 in the buildable area. Lot 35, that's gonna be a unique one.
35 seems to lose the most.
It's still gonna be about 20,000 buildable, because it looks like almost a 30 and a half roughly. So it's still 20,000 buildable.
The owner and the developer has a big vision on this property. Like I said, we've spent a lot of time on this one, just sitting out there, because it is exceptional. It's beautiful. It's amazing. He doesn't want a cookie cutter subdivision going in there doing little dinky lots. I mean, these are gonna be big estate lots. We're, to avoid big retaining walls, we're trying to leave them as natural as possible. The hillside ordinance is really clear on what they, what they envision with terracing of homes and yards to prevent, you know, but that's right in harmony with what the developer wants to do on this property.
What was the criteria for the, for the line?
Slope.
Slope.
Mm-hmm. Slope map. But we didn't want to get out in the rock either. Like, if you get out there, there's some really cool rock features that, you know, are better left natural, not disturbed. Like I said, he's going for a different, he wants a really nice high-end development up there. I mean, Westgate is beautiful. Lion's Head's amazing. And this is an awesome piece of property. So he wants to do it right. You know, you get in between 33 and 34 where that no disturb line goes up in, it's a really cool, like little rock canyon area. And he's, you know, keeping it out. I rambled a lot, sorry.
Thanks, Brandy. Any other questions, comments?
I guess if there are no other comments, then I'm gonna have to say that I'm gonna have to rely on the engineers as far as rock disturbance. Wasn't very comfortable when you'd mentioned you just talked to Kimball Gardner, and Kimball said he hadn't had a problem. That didn't give me any level of comfort, to be honest. It wasn't until Brandy got up and said that the engineers had actually looked at it. And no disrespect to Kimball Gardner, I'm just talking about you can't rely on one guy to say this is what's there. So, you know, if, if the engineers have done it, hillside committees looked at it, and they're comfortable, there's not gonna be an issue with falling rocks and disturbance of the neighbors and these, no, no disturb zones really gonna be in place. I'd make a motion, we approve a preliminary plat for Eagle Summit Estates located south of West, Westgate Hill at approximately 1,300 west, 200 north.
We have a motion and a second?
Nye's nye.
Truman, aye.
Staley, nay.
Seg Miller, aye.
Okay, it passes 3 to 1. Thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, Rogers. This is. Leave it with Denise. Item 7, Resolutions. Consideration to approve a resolution approving, approving the form of the equipment lease agreement with designs for National Bank, Salt Lake City, Utah. Buying it is in the best interest of Washington City, Utah, entering to set agreement authorizing execution and delivery thereof. Terry Willwright.
Council members, mayor, Mr. Starkey, I'm on before you, asking for an approval on a resolution of $270,000 on a lease purchase for new equipment for the community center and for the golf course and for the parks department. Community center would be allocated $50,000 of the $270,000 that we are asking for on the lease purchase. They would be purchasing new exercise equipment with that to replace the worn out exercise equipment that they've been limping along with up there for quite some time. Would be an allocation of $140,000 to go to the golf course for new mowing equipment and maintenance equipment for the golf course. The remainder of $80,000 would go to the parks department for like equipment, for mowing equipment and for maintenance equipment for the city parks. for like equipment, for mowing equipment and for maintenance equipment for the city parks. We have negotiated with Zion's Bank in regard to that. This is a five-year lease purchase. We negotiated an interest rate of two-point-two-three percent on that, which puts our payments on a monthly basis over that five-year period of time at about forty-seven hundred sixty-six dollars. There's also a five-hundred dollar origination fee on the loan, so the actual loan amount will be two-hundred-seventy thousand five hundred dollars.
Have the cash flow to afford that?
This was actually approved in the fiscal year 2016 budget that you had a few months back in regard to the expenditure and the understanding that this would be done on a lease purchase. Uh, the money has been allocated and will be divided equally among the, in, in the percentage that the different departments are receiving the allocation of the funds. So yes, the cash flow is there, uh, and this is actually the easiest and best way to do that, to replace this equipment because the, the actual lump sum of money is not available right now without the use of the lease purchase.
And I could say, just for everybody else's benefit, I met with Cole Staley and the community center folks on the equipment. A lot of the equipment is wore out, but they're actually have an idea to keep the, some of the older equipment and putting in like a circuit cage so they can utilize that, get the new equipment in.
Yeah.
Sounds like they have a good idea going.
Oh, we are asking you to approve a resolution so that we can move forward with this. Uh, if this, this resolution is approved, then funding would be available for this on September eighth. I know that, uh, the three departments involved are anxious in getting the new equipment so that they can move forward with their business.
So the mowing equipment for the golf course and parks, will that be put it, put up to just liquidation? Are those going to be, seems like we often need to replace old stuff, but then we keep the old stuff around anyway? Do you know what the plan will be with the, I mean, clearly they've been mowing, so the, the existing mowing equipment that's being replaced, what's the plan there?
I have no idea in regard to that. I, I didn't get involved in the logistics of that. I was just asked to negotiate the lease purchase. I know there was a meeting that was, that was held earlier. Oh, Mike will talk.
Mike knows about the mowers.
Yeah, I was involved with the, uh, with the request for the purchase. Our, our fleet manager, as well as myself, met with the golf course and the parks department. There's several pieces of equipment that have value that we will surplus out. Uh, so we'll do a sealed advertised bid, or we'll probably run them down to the auction in Vegas. We've run several pieces down there and gotten very good money out of those.
And the Richie Bows?
Yeah, or TNT is who we did. Some of the other equipment is new equipment to cover the additional spaces that they've got, like the new soccer fields and some additional equipment to enhance their abilities of maintaining the parks. Well, I think there's three pieces that we will surplus out and that will come back into the general funds revenue.
Does council have any further questions that I could possibly answer for them?
No further questions or any other discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, approving the form of the equipment lease agreement with Zion's First National Bank.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Nice, nigh.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Carrie. Item eight, consideration to approve an ordinance of Washington City by instituting a program for curbside collection of residential recyclable materials and establishing rules, regulations, and fees pertaining to said program.
Mayor, maybe I'll just say a bit and then turn it over to council Starkey to present the ordinance. This is, this is the culmination of lots of months of discussions, starting at the waste district. And as you know, we've discussed it here on these chambers a number of times and we've, we've verbally kind of discussed and tried to find the preference of the council members. And so this is, this ordinance reflects that preference. Essentially reflects that we would, we would contribute and participate in the recycle program, that we would also have it be on an opt-out basis so that residents that prefer not to participate or not to be participating in the fee, the fee side of this, as well as the recycling side, have the ability to opt out. Um, the section that kind of addresses that is section five. One of the challenges that you have and council Starkey and, and council, and Fay Reber, who's attorney for the district, wrestled with all of this, which is how do you, how do you give it enough definition and bright lines so that it's something that's, that's able to be administered after we've passed it? And so I, I think they've, they've done as good as you can do. And, and in that, they've kind of leaned on the side of the ability to opt out. If you do want to opt out, that, that window exists and, and it's, it's pretty clear that you have that right.
Counsel Starkey, I just got to say, I know you've brought this a number of times and you've worked hard on that, and we appreciate all that you've done to get it to this point.
Yeah, and I think council Seg Miller summed it up pretty well. He's the one that's really carried most of the representation of the city on this with the committee meetings and following through and, and looking at the different options that would be available. Again, I think through discussions with, with city council over the last several months as it looked like this was going to come to fruition. It was, it seemed clear that this city council at least leaned favor, heavily towards allowing citizens to have the right to opt out of this if they, if, if it were possible. And so, um, so we've provided that in a way that, that hopefully that'll be as easy as possible, uh, that we can get notice out to everybody as, as, uh, as efficiently as we, as we possibly can. And that, in so doing, that doesn't, throughout all the communities that have the opt-out provision, it doesn't necessarily bring it below the fifty percent level because once, if it goes below the fifty percent level based on the agreement that the district has with the contractor who would be collecting the curbside recyclables, then it would no longer be efficient enough to even do it. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be financially even reasonable. So having said that, citizens have until, or residents have until October thirty-first to opt out. And, uh, after that, the program should be starting around January first. And I'm, so I'm not sure how much else you have questions about. I think it pretty much follows along what we've, we've talked about in the past. The good thing is it, it's very similar to what the other larger city in the county is doing and implementing the procedures with the opt-out uh, so that the biggest communities are, are pretty much running under the same procedures as, as, as they go through this.
I would just mention that Neil Schwendeman, the, the manager of the district's also here. If any council members want to, want to grill him like they grilled the developers tonight.
Oh, Neil is here?
Neil's here, yeah.
Not much of a grilling. So Neil, just as a confirmation for council Seg Miller, I, we think we understand that the fifty percent level, uh, is based on a fifty percent, um, who are still eligible and still participating in it, based on those communities which are involved in the recycling program anyway?
Correct, it would be based on just the participating cities and the percentage of those residents, residents who are participating within those cities. So Apple Valley, New Harmony, and Enterprise are all non-participating. So it would be just the population or the number of homes as the base. And then the ones that are participating would come up with that percentage. And so our thought was if it was below fifty percent, one, it's not economical. And two, that's, the public has spoken and said we don't want it.
But it's based on everybody, so.
Well, that's basically Hurcan, Washington, St. George, Santa Clara.
Ivans.
Hurcan's already, they, they've tilted the scale, hopefully in the direction of about fifty percent by going mandatory.
We have Hurcan, Ivans, and Springdale all mandatory, which puts us right at twenty percent, only counting their numbers.
So if, if Washington and St. George, I mean, around fifty, we're, we're there.
Yep.
By, by a healthy margin. Curious to see where it comes in at.
I am too.
Yeah.
And just for information, we're looking at, trying to start by February one just because trying to deliver recycling containers in the month of December may be very difficult. So, and we have a, a website, bluecan.org. And I've already met with staff and they have material to already send out to the public, uh, informing them of the opt-out period, September one through October thirty-one. So all that material is, has already been dispersed and ready to go.
And if it passes tonight, we'll, we will also publicize that in our newsletter. I would recommend that we maybe put it, insert into our utility billing and also post it out on the, out on the boards. Of course, it would be on our website, and that's about the four channels that we really have control over.
And, and, uh, running with this, if, if this is approved, the understa- so some of the, two of the items, at least one of the items we have coming up later is going to be the agreement with the district for this collection service, uh, which it pairs with it, but comes under a different heading, so. If you don't approve it, we don't have to even look at the agreement.
If, if we vote eight down, nine just goes away, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Mayor, if there's no other comments, I'll just make the motion that we can, that the council approve the ordinance of Washington City instituting a curbside collection of residential recyclable materials. It's been a twist in the attachment tonight.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Nice, nigh.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
All right, we'll move on with that. Item nine, consideration to approve an agreement between Washington County Special Service District Number One and Dixie Waste Services, Inc., authorizing the execution of an agreement between Washington County Special Service District Number One and Washington City.
This is probably my item also, uh, and just based on the, uh, quick summary that I, that I gave, this is, this is simply just the agreement, similar to agreements we have in place with the district for the, um, curbside pickup of solid waste on a weekly basis and take into the landfill and, which is still billed through our utilities. So we're the ones that make the agreement with the, with the district to provide for this service. Um, this one just sets forth that this is going to be in addition to the other agreement we have, but this is the agreement necessary in order to kind of effectuate that ordinance that we're going to, that we, that we've approved. I don't know if there's anything really stands out on the agreement, is there anything?
I think the only thing that's worth mentioning is that it's only a five-year agreement at this point where the district and the, and the representatives from the cities are looking at it as, you know, this is a five-year window. It should be sufficiently long to give us an idea and work out the kinks and see if it can work. But also sufficiently short that if it doesn't work, with, there's an end inside and it can, it can be wrapped up and closed down without, without being locked in for too long of a term.
No further discussion. All motion that we approve an agreement between Washington County Special Service District Number One and Dixie Waste Services, Inc., and authorizing the execution of an agreement between Washington County Special Services District Number One and Washington City, Utah.
I'll second the motion.
Nice, nigh.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye. Seg Miller, aye.
Thanks gentlemen, that's approved. We'll move on to item B, consideration to approve a facility lease agreement between Weight Watchers, Washington City, to relocate a community center.
Thanks Neil.
Yeah, um, and I got the staff report on this, uh, but had a glitch in getting the, the actual agreement up on this, so let me just give you a quick summary of the staff report. This is a, uh, this is for consideration to approve a one-year with potentially two one-year extensions of an agreement with Weight Watchers who recently closed their office in St. George, um, and have been discussing having that, bringing their classes and bringing, uh, for Weight Watchers to the multipurpose room, multi-use room, I should say, at the, uh, community center. The, uh, it would be for five meetings a week, those meetings being Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, two on Wednesday. Yeah, and one on Saturday. For two hours each, so about ten hours total. That they come in, from what I understand from a family member who is involved with this, they come in just for their, kind of for just weekly classes. So it's not an intensive use of our multi-use room, uh, it's for the two hours. Staff feels like it's a very, um, that it's a good fit for our community center. One thing it brings, our citizens in Washington who used to have to travel to St. George to go to these meetings, brings them to our community center. Two, given the fact that it's health-related, um, it's also a, a, a pretty good fit and something that staff felt was within those, kind of what the council was looking for to find those good fits with our, with some of our communities, um, to some of those users.
Is that lease agreement in the packet?
No, it didn't. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's a, I've, I've gone through and tried to format it more closely with, um, just our, the, the approved leases we've had in the past. So with our, with our gymnastics, uh, with our concession, with the same types of provisions would include that they'd have to, they're excluded during those times in which we have other activity scheduled, emergencies, uh, those types of things. And the, the rent rate would be, so we get, the rent rate's going to be eight-hundred-sixty-seven dollars a month, so it's about ten thousand dollars a year for the, what's it, ten hours a week. No, I said, no, I didn't. I had a glitch on, on mine trying to get that to load on my new formatting. And what I would also want to do is, again, it's the same lease we use that we've approved in the past. But there's some question where not, on these smaller ones where they need to come to city council. It's kind of my opinion that since we've done it in the past, need to come to city council. I'd like to say if, if...
Council chairman, if you, you had a chance with your committee assignment to be, keep abreast of this or is it first, I have a first impression today too?
I'd like, yeah, especially based on that, I'd like to at least, at least have it conditioned upon council Truman reviewing it. Being comfortable with it since it's on, on his assignment. I don't think it came up on the last time you were at a meeting.
The last time we met, they talked about they needed an agreement in place. They were going to get with you and put it together, and they said they had a form from some other place that Wendy had been starting on. And obviously, yeah, we just want to make certain it's...
Yeah, we're back to the form we've used and proved already. I just took it from that, from that form already because it has all the provisions we, we thought about and addressed before.
Maybe I'll take a stab at a motion that's the council approved the facility lease agreement on the condition that it's presented to council and Truman in his facility, in his role as the committee member there. And, and it's approved by him as well.
That event was actually coming up and already in place, the Weight Watchers. They actually started that, I thought it was just kind of like an urgency on it.
I think they're working on it on kind of a week-to-week basis.
We need some sign to formalize it.
We won't, we won't issue that one.
Because they need a premises or something, they need a, they need a location?
And that issue, from what I understood, come to the head because they listed the community center as their place of business, I'd say, so.
Yeah, we've clarified that can't be done. They are, their, their actual, their title is actually Weight Watchers of Las Vegas. That gives you an indication. So they're based out of Las Vegas. They, apparently Weight Watchers goes to Cedar City and to Washington County. Until about two weeks ago, they had a place in St. George. And I think they just felt this was a better place.
I'll second, I'll second council, councilman Seg Miller's motion.
We're, we're watching our weight over there, it's a good fit.
Thank you.
Nice, nigh.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye. Seg Miller, aye.
All right. Approved, move on to item ten, award a bid in RFP. Consideration to award the bid for the thirty-six fifty South Road and Storm Rain Project. Mike Shaw.
Finally, it's my turn.
Hope you enjoyed the entertainment tonight.
It was wonderful.
Mayor, council, on August 19th, we opened bids on our 3650 South Road Storm Drain Project. Our low bid on the project was JP Excavating at $1,409,268.73, well under our engineer's estimate, which we like to see. So we're asking council to award this project to JP Excavating.
I recall you saying that we would start the project at the first of the year?
Actually, we'll start probably within 30 days.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Am I... where did I...
You're thinking Washington Fields Phase Four project.
Okay, this is the storm drain?
This is 3650 South.
Oh, 3650 South, there. Okay, that's where I... gotcha.
Kind of wait till after the fall season to avoid...
Yeah, we're... that one's a UDOT, or a federally funded project, gonna be administered by UDOT, so we had to go through all their steps. And in turn, it's kind of delayed the design process to where we would interfere with the happenings in the fall with the corn maze and whatnot. And also, we would hit the cold temperatures for asphalt, so we felt it better to wait till spring on that project.
What was the engineer's estimate on this? That'll be nice. We've talked about that for a few years now, that 3650 improvement.
And, you know, it's... you know, this is one of the projects that...
I don't know where I'm gonna go anymore to test out my car's function.
You can go to 3050 South. But 3650 will be really nice, very soon.
This is one of the projects that council allocated some extra funding to go towards. We've way exceeded that, but we've really expanded this project, and it's gonna be a very nice project.
How far to the east is that improvement?
We will go from the city's western boundary to the east, it will be Camino Real.
Okay.
Which, we have no roads any further east. We worked with the Anders family, great to work with. We got the right-of-way needed. We were gonna stop the project at Washington Fields Road, but with the development that's happening, and the Anders family working so great with us, we've extended the project up to Camino. You know, add its more dollars, but it'll make a really nice roadway completely through.
And I know the low bid contractor's done plenty of work with our... with us. And I know we have good confidence in them. I'm a bit curious, just personally, line number 38 is for the Storm Drain Doghouse. Just curious what a Storm Drain Doghouse is.
It's a doghouse made out of storm.
Sounds nice, yeah.
It's actually...
Where you go when you're in trouble?
When I'm in trouble. Where we put in our big main trunk line down through the fields, the twin 54 inches, that's where we're tying into it, and it's doghousing over that existing pipe to tie this pipe into it.
You can make it another name. You can have that be another name, Mike.
It's a learning opportunity.
We did have really good tight bids on the, you know, the three-bottom bids. You know, we were within $80,000 on those three lower bids, so good tight bidding, feel very good with it.
Mayor, if there's nothing more to be said, I'll make the motion that we award the bid for the 3650 South Road and Storm Drain Project to JP Excavation, Inc., who has submitted a low bid.
Second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Nice night.
Truman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Seg Miller, aye.
All right, that's awarded. Thanks, Mike, get to work. Can you be reported from the signed committees?
I have something to report. Mosquito situation. Apparently, West Nile virus has come here to the county in the past week. They found it at their three locations, St. George along the Virgin River, Little Valley radio towers, and in Washington at the east Boiler's Pond. I don't know exactly where that is. You know, Mike?
The war springs.
Why would they call it east?
Apparently, I have a wet boiler spring, but I don't know where.
Anyway, they have found it in the past week, so I thought I'd pass that on.
So that means the West Nile was identified in the mosquitoes that they collected at the Boilers? Wow.
Everyone stopped waiting, eh?
It's been a... it seems to be...
Says to take precautions.
Is the same amount of abatement occurring, Councilman Nice Night? It seems to me that there's been more mosquitoes this year, and it may have just been a wet spring, or did...
Yeah, they really had a problem over in Hurrican, is what I understand. You know, they're below Hurrican, and... But they haven't had any problem with West Nile until I just got this email today. And so anyway, it sounds like it's here. It's been up north for a while, so...
All right, anything else, gentlemen? We'll bypass the city manager report, and we do have a chance to go to a closed session to discuss the character or professional competence of an individual.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adjourn to a closed session.
I'll second it. All right.
Nice night.
Seg Miller, aye.
Take a five-minute break and go on in.